I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Clark, if you would, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Gaskell.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
Alderperson Ricky is absent and excused.
Thank you. We have a quorum, so we will proceed. Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening? Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Going for the third time, anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will move on on the agenda. Next is the approval of minutes from the June 12 meeting of the Common Council. Those minutes were included with your packet. What is your pleasure?
Move of approval.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried and the minutes are approved. Under citizen committee appointments, I have one additional appointment this evening, and that would be for the zoning board of appeals. Brett Peta from 1370 Scenic Ridge Drive has accepted the vacancy on the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Peta has, and his family have lived in the city for approximately 14 years. His profession is that he is a pharmacist. So I would ask for your confirmation of his appointment to the zoning board of appeals.
Move of approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. All those in favor of the confirmation of Brett Peta to the zoning board of appeals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. That concludes my report for this evening. We will go to the administrator's report. Mr. McCorskey, please.
Thank you. A couple items today. As we've been discussing for the last couple months, starting today at 10 o'clock, South Main Street was closed. And we have detour routes getting people around South Main Street, expected to be closed about six weeks. In the packet I did include the local route, but there's also a truck route that should get traffic through the city. The maps are on our webpage, Facebook page, and they're well signed on the streets. And again, I think it was asked the last time, Facebook page is Verona South Main Project. It's all together. And then our city's web pages, ci Verona dot W I dot U S. And those pages will be identified, or those maps will be identified. Two upcoming meetings. First, coming up Thursday is the Northwest Neighborhood Meeting, Public Information Meeting. It'll be here Thursday at 6:30. And then we have a neighborhood meeting in District, for District Three regarding independent and assisted residential living facility at 841 West Main Street.
North Main Street.
I'm sorry, north, thank you. North Main Street. That'll be at the Public Library on July 11th from 6 to 7.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. McCorskey? Any questions or comments?
The only thing I want to follow up on is anytime you have this type of construction and disruption, usually you hear a lot of complaints. And for me, what I've heard this time is exactly the opposite. And I just wanted to pass that on to Public Works and to Parisi. In fact, one of the emails that I received is that they could not have asked for better updates or better communication than what they're receiving. So the feedback that I have heard, I'm not sure what others on the council are hearing, but the feedback that I have heard has been very positive and we appreciate that. So Theron, thank you, and if you can make sure that Parisi hears that as well.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, we will move then to the engineers' report. Mr. Montpass, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick updates. The construction on County Trunk Highway PD is moving forward. The curb and gutter is done. Paving for base and surface is scheduled to start this week with traffic switches to all their lanes, tentatively scheduled for the week of July 7th. There will be temporary single lane closures while they work on additional lighting and landscaping in that area, but the traffic switch is supposed to be July 7th. The second update is on the parking lots. AECOM submitted 60 percent plans and specifications to the city for review. Hopefully that will be ready for advertisement mid or early July for an August bid opening.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Montpass? Seeing none, thank you, Jeff. With that, we will move to committee reports. We'll begin with the Finance Committee. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 981, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $497,521.51.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. In the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, the first two were for right-of-way acquisition for the County Highway M project. First one being $54,377.36 for parcel eight. And the second one being to the Madison West, or West Madison Bible Church, again, that is parcel 15, $129,800. And finally to V and H, Inc., Madison, for patrol truck chassis, $97,677.50.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. You have heard the expenditure, the major expenditures. Are there any questions or comments for the Finance Committee or for staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling $497,521.51. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. The bills are paid. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. Under item 982, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-17-040, awarding the sale of $5,265,000 of general obligation street improvement bond series 2017A.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. From the administrator's memorandum you all received, these general obligation street improvement bonds allows for the sale of those bonds for street improvements consistent with the city's 2017 capital improvement plan within the 2017 city budget. This bond will provide funding for projects including County Highway M and County PD intersection, and street improvements on Park Lane, Schuman, and Railroad Street. Pedestrian and bicycle plan improvements are also included in a portion of the annual mill and overlay street projects. We also have Mr. Todd Tase from Ellers and Associates. If we could have him come forward, he could do an explanation of both this and the item on the next agenda.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Tase.
Thank you. So we received bids for both the bonds and the notes this morning. You received a total of four bids on the bonds, with the winner being BOK, and a total of five bids on the notes, with the winner being Baird. For planning purposes on the bonds, we had assumed an interest rate of 2.98 percent. The actual rate is 2.71, so roughly a quarter point lower than the estimate. And similarly, on the notes, we had assumed an interest rate of 2.26. The actual interest rate is 1.78, so roughly a half percent lower on that issue. There's a sale report for both the bonds and the notes. The financial exhibits that I'm going to touch on briefly are identical in both reports, so you can feel free to pick up either one. And you'll notice about four pages in or so, there's a series of fold-out exhibits, if you could locate that. The first of the three is the sizing worksheet for the bonds and the notes. There's a before and after column. The before column, which is the pre-sale estimate, is what the council authorized a month ago. With respect to the bonds, the authorization was for $5,340,000. The issue size is being reduced by a total of $75,000 for a new total of $5,265,000. The amount that the city receives for projects remains the same, but because of an underwriting premium that you receive, a portion of which is available to reduce the issue size, as well as lower cost of issuance, and a partially unused underwriter discount, we're able to make that size reduction. And again, you still end up with the same amount for projects. With the notes, the authorization was for $3,075,000. The final sizing is $3,035,000. And that $40,000 reduction is again for similar reasons, a combination of an underwriting premium that was received, lesser costs of issuance, and unused underwriter discount. On the second of the large fold-out pages, we show the actual debt service impact as compared to the estimates we reviewed last month. On the left-hand side of the exhibit is the existing debt, existing projected tax levy requirement. In the center, then, we've got the actual final principal and interest schedule for both the bonds and the notes. If you look at the bottom of that display, what we've got there for reference is that initial authorization with estimated interest. So on the bonds, you'll note the $75,000 reduction in principal again. We have interest costs that are above the estimate of $44,000, but offset by $147,000 retained premium. When those are added together, the total cost of the principal and interest over the 20-year term of the bonds will be $178,545 less than the estimate. With respect to the notes, the $40,000 per principal reduction, along with $9,000 in less interest expense and a retained premium of just over $36,000 results in total financing cost over the 10-year life of the notes of about $85,000 less than the pre-sale estimate. The other documents included in here are the CIP, which we looked at last month just for reference. So that's been updated now with the actual 2017 results for planning purposes. There's also a copy of the Moody's rating report as part of the process. We had that call and the city's AA2 rating was affirmed. And the very last page of both reports is just a interest rate graph that shows where the market has been over the past year. When we had started the planning, rates were a bit higher than they are now. So the reason we are seeing results that are favorable, you know, partly because of the maintenance of the bond rating, but also just a function of the market in terms of where we've seen rates tracking over the last six weeks or so. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have with regard to today's bid results.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments? You must have explained it very well, Todd.
Exciting stuff.
All right. With that, we do have a motion on the floor. The motion is to approve resolution number R-17-040. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. Under item 983, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-17-041, authorizing the issuance and sale of $3,355,000 of general obligation promissory notes series 2017B.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. This resolution allows for the sale of general obligation promissory notes for projects consistent with the city's 2017 capital improvement plan within the 2017 city budget, including replacing the senior center HVAC, improvements to the library, TIF for development projects, utility improvements associated with Park, Schuman, and Railroad Street improvements, and improvements to the Lincoln Street Channel and Basin.
Thank you for the explanation. Questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve resolution number R-17-041. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Tase, thank you for being here again this evening.
My pleasure.
Anything else in the Finance Committee?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. We will move then to Senior Citizens Commission. Mr. Steiner, please.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the amendments of the City of Verona Senior Center administrative policies.
We have a motion by Mr. Steiner. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Steiner, please.
This is a process that we are required to go through every five years. And this process is an attempt by the state of Wisconsin to develop uniformity with all the senior centers in the state. And it's just a process we've gone through, and it's usually a pretty positive deal. Mrs. Hanson and our city administrator have worked together on this, and I've looked at many of these, and this one looks about as good as any of them. So I hope you approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that I thank the senior director that she's done an excellent job updating things. A lot of thought went into the changes, and I think it's improved the policies. I mean, I recognize that most of the time, people don't ever look at these things, but if, but we're better off when they're in good shape. So I'm glad she put the thought and work into it.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the amendments to the Senior Citizens Center administrative policies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Steiner, anything else from Senior Citizens Commission?
No, Mayor. That's it.
Thank you. We will move then to Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9C1, this item is actually just an informational item. No action required by the council. It's a special event permit application for the Madison Beer Run 5K and .05K on October 1st of 2017 from Alex Ogden at 414 Events. This event was already approved by Public Safety, and put simply, it's the first time they've been to Verona. They, it's a 5K run that will be held again on October 1st of this year. It's a chip time event. They are, they will be partnering with the Hop House Brewing Company, which is designated as the end of the route. To minimize the number of street closures required, the ice age trail and the path on East Verona Road will be utilized for the event. Volunteer course marshals will be assigned to sections of any streets that need to be closed. There will be no drinking on the course, but each participant will be offered one free beer after completing the event. Later, we'll see a temporary premise amendment for the Hop House Brewing Company for this event. The promised amendment request will be considered, estimated at the end of the summer.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. And that was information only. No need to take any action. Agenda item 9C2, please.
I'll make a motion to approve a combination Class A beer and Class A intoxicating liquor license for the 2017-18 renewal application from Madison Oil LLC doing business as Verona Liquor at 103 South Main Street in Verona.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second? Second, I'm sorry, Ms. Gaskell, okay. Second by Ms. Gaskell. Mr. Touche?
This renewal application for Madison Oil was submitted timely by LK agent. The application was not considered at the June 12 meeting of the Common Council as a property did not initially meet building inspection standards. After reinspection by staff, they found that the building code violations have been corrected, and the building is now up to code.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? If not, the motion before you is to approve the combination Class A beer and Class B intoxicating liquor license. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Next up, item 9B, 9C3. I make an emotion to approve a combination Class B beer and Class B intoxicating liquor license for the 2017-2018 renewal application from Tavern and Bar LLC doing business as cahoots at 102 Railroad Street in Verona.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second? Seconded by Gaskell. Mr. Touche, please.
Like the last item, again, this application was not considered at the June 12, 2017, meeting of the Common Council as a property did not meet fire inspection standards. To date, the code violations noted in the inspections have been corrected, and the building is now up to code.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you again is to approve a combination Class B and Class B intoxicating liquor license. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Next up, item 9C4. I make an emotion to recommend to the Common Council to not approve the combination Class B beer and Class B intoxicating liquor license for the 2017-18 renewal application for the Heights of Verona LLC doing business as the Heights Event Center at 411 Prairie Heights Drive in Verona, Wisconsin. Chadwick Lippin agent due to indebtedness to a wholesaler for intoxicating liquor, and to give the city staff authority to proceed with the denial process.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Gaskell. Mr. Touche, please.
This application was not considered on the June 12, 2017, meeting of the Common Council as the property did not meet fire and building inspection standards. In addition, a wholesaler's report of the delinquent retailer license for the Heights of Verona LLC was received by the city clerk after the June 12 meeting. Because of the delinquent liquor bill, the Common Council, we recommend the Common Council do not approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Seeing none, just as a reminder, the motion is to not approve and to authorize the city staff to take the necessary action. All those in favor of the motion to not approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, anything else from Public Safety and Welfare?
That is all for tonight.
All right. And then we will move on, Mr. Touche, to Public Works, Sewer and Water Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make an, under item 9D1, I make an emotion to approve an agreement for the jurisdictional transfer of County Highway M in the City of Verona.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche?
Along County Highway M, the current boundary for jurisdiction is at the intersection of County Highway M and Prairie Oaks Drive. After the reconstruction of County Highway M, a jurisdictional transfer from Prairie Oaks to Stony Ridge Circle would be effective November 1st of 2019, per this agreement. Currently, the section of the County Highway M from Prairie Oaks Drive to Stony Ridge Circle is within city limits. City and staff attorney have reviewed the documentation and have no concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Any questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the agreement for the jurisdictional transfer of County Trunk Highway M, which is North Main Street in the City of Verona. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Next up, item 9D2. I make an emotion to approve a temporary easement agreement, excuse me, temporary limited easement agreement for stream channel restoration, sloping, and grading process contingent upon the city attorney's final review.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Touche, please.
The temporary limited easement agreement with the city and Dane County is for the restoration of the Lincoln Street Channel under city project ID 2017-109. 900 linear feet of the 1,200 lineal feet of project length is on county lands. This agreement has standard language for this type of easement agreement. Staff has reviewed the easement and recommends approval. In addition, the county has also already reviewed and approved this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Not seeing any, the motion is to approve the temporary limited easement for stream channel restoration, sloping, and grading purposes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Next up, item 9D3. I make an emotion to approve a developers' agreement for the Cross Point Estates.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
Cross Point Estates is located along North Ninemount Road and South Plow Road. The development includes 11 lots and one outlot for stormwater management. The agreement anticipates that construction of the public improvements to serve the area will commence on early July of this year and will be substantially completed in October, by October 31st of this year, pending permit approval. The developers' agreement shall be contingent on staff and city review.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? The motion before you is to approve the developers' agreement for the Cross Point Estates with a contingency that'll be approved by city staff and legal counsel. Seeing no questions, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. That has been approved. Mr. Touche, please.
The next two items, I'm actually going to defer to our Public Works Director to go through our space needs study and energy audit study.
Mr. Jacobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Mr. Doug Forten of Bari Entos Design and Consulting. They were the consultant that worked on the space needs analysis and the energy analysis for the Public Works facility. So I'm going to leave the floor to Mr. Forten here, and he's going to run through the PowerPoint presentations that were given to the Public Works Committee a month ago. And we can, so we get through the presentation, we can take any questions right at the end and go back and forth and answer anything that the council or anyone else has. So Doug.
Hi, I'm Doug Forten with Bari Entos Design. Quickly, hold on. As part of the presentation tonight, we're going to quickly run through what our company does. I'm not sure too many of you are familiar with our firm specifically. We'll talk about the scope of the project. We'll talk a little bit about the current facility. We did a space needs assessment, and then we looked at other alternative sites for the future potential development of a DPW facility. Our company has been around for 50 years. It's a second-generation, family-owned business. It was primarily a civil engineering firm years ago. We've transitioned to only architecture, but we still focus on the transportation sector, primarily working with DPW facilities. As you can see, a few of the ones that we recently did for Jefferson County, a fleet maintenance repair shop in Sun Prairie, Dora County, and Menominee shop as well. These are examples of other projects that we've done similar to this project. We've done space needs and master plans for New Berlin, Milwaukee, Cudahry, just to name a few. The New Berlin Water Utilities actually just moved forward. They're going to be building this upcoming year. This just gives you a simple map of counties and cities that we worked, worked throughout the state of Wisconsin. Our work is primarily in Wisconsin. So for the City of Verona, we did a space needs study of their, looking at their existing building, their fleet, as well as their staffing. We compared the existing square footages to optimal square footages. And then we looked at some expansion options of the existing facility. We then identified site selection criteria. What would we need for a new facility if that was the direction that we were given? And then we evaluated three sites, in this case, for future development. Currently, and I don't know, Theron, if you want to talk on this, but currently, the Public Works works out of 39,000 square feet that was developed in 2001. It's my understanding that more acreage was owned around that parcel originally. It had been sold off over the years, and now, now, the department's kind of in a landlocked situation where behind the facility, there's some wetlands that it makes it difficult to build up against. And then when you, when you see the plan, you'll see some more concerns. In 2001, the construction cost for the building was about $3 million. And Theron, he
I projected
projected the cost to today. If we were to build a similar type facility, it would be 4.8 million. Projected the cost to today. If we were to build a similar type facility, it would be four point eight million, not including the cost of land acquisition. Currently, the garage itself is overcrowded. There's no mechanic space. You have multiple people, multiple staff members working out of the same office. If anybody's been over there, the meeting room is really only big enough for about eight people and, and it's also being used as storage. There are some issues on the site as far as traffic circulation goes. And then some of the yard buildings are really too small. They're kind of packed to the, to the brim. The existing facility, like I mentioned before, is about thirty-nine thousand square feet. In total, there's about fifty-four thousand square feet there. We're, we're saying, if we're planning for a fifty to seventy year building, the full buildout of the site would eventually be about ninety thousand square feet. What we'd be looking at doing right up front would be about seventy thousand, a little over seventy thousand square feet with an additional about twenty thousand for cold storage on the site. This is a, this is a picture, a floor plan of the existing facility expanded. So we did look at an option that would push the overall square footage of the building to sixty, a little over sixty thousand square feet, which doesn't quite hit where the optimal square footage would be. And then the other, the other concern is this would be the full buildout of the site. So it wouldn't be in our professional expertise to, to tell you that this would be the preferable route to go because you're not hitting the optimal square footage and there's no room for future expansion.
And that only takes care of the garage area either. It doesn't take care of any of the other issues on site with traffic circulation. Excuse me, the outside yard storage, the salt shed, the drop off bays and any of the other outside storage that we utilize on site, so.
Right. Additionally, another concern that Theron had was in this scenario, we would be basically moving the building east and taking over the parking that's in front of the building. We would move that parking to the north and we would be covering up a stormwater retention pond or a stormwater area. That would need to be essentially buried underneath the parking lot in that case, which becomes a long-term maintenance issue. The cost of this would be about five million dollars to make these changes to go from thirty-nine thousand square feet up to, up to sixty-four thousand square feet. As Theron mentioned, it doesn't, it doesn't relieve any of the traffic issues. The cold storage building, the salt storage building are still undersized in this scenario.
We kind of listed all the expansion issues on the right of the screen to show you what it doesn't meet or what some of the issues are derived from that, going with that alternative.
So from there, we, we took a, we took a quick look at basically putting a floor plan together and then laying out what an optimal site would look like. We identified that, you know, we would need, depending on the site depending on the site that we selected, the topography, the, the size, the shape of the site, we would need somewhere between twelve and eighteen acres. Knowing that not every site is going to be a nice clean square like this hypothetical site. The concept building plan will look fairly similar to the shop that they have currently. I think everyone that I met with really does like the way that the shop functions currently. However, it's, it's significantly undersized for what they're, what they're doing. We then identified what would need to be, what would be some of their top criteria in finding a new location. The location, the proximity to different roads in town, sufficient site size, adequate area for expansion, development costs, land use compatibility. Those are all things that we, we went over in, in trying to find a site. So we found three sites that we, we looked at, took cursory looks at, and then we developed one a little bit further. The Bruce Street site is actually right across the street from their current shop. It's a large open area. There's actually thirty-four acres. However, because of a creek that runs through the site and floodplain areas, really only about seven acres is buildable and it's kind of a divided site then. The, the site is also, has a lot of topography, which is generally not great for this, this type of building. Usually this type of building wants to be on a flatter surface. The next two sites are both off a range trail. One is on the east side of the road, the other's on the west side of the road. The east side, the east side property, again, is larger than what they need and we would, we would suggest only purchasing a portion of that. We did look at multiple options. One option looked at taking most of the land on the west side of this property with more frontage along range trail. It's a flatter parcel on the, on the west side. However, it, as you can tell by the building, it's not really conducive. It's a longer building and to spread that whole thing out and to push some of those functions towards the corner, towards the corner there probably wasn't the best option. So we looked at, we looked at putting the building on the south side of the site. The one concern with this is that the front portion of the site is lower. The back portion of the site where the salt storage buildings are is up above fifteen or twenty feet. There, there could be some concerns with that. Usually, we solve those problems with large retaining walls, but there's also a cost associated with that. And then the last site is actually right across the street from the site we just looked at, Range Trail West. This site is relatively flat. There's room for future expansion. It's a, it's a larger site. There are, there is some residential to the west, but we would propose landscaping berms. And it is a, it is quite a distance away to the west. So it is a compatible land use and this is not in the city limit, so it would need to be annexed in. But generally, we, we saw the, the concerns with this site were significantly less than the other sites. This site also has all the major utilities that would be needed for a building of this magnitude. As you can see, this, this one kind of checked all the boxes, the Range Trail West site. There were some negatives to the other sites. Range Trail West, there were not nearly as many negatives. From a, from a construction cost estimate standpoint, the overall total of sixteen point million can be broken down into three areas. The, the new building would be about ten million dollars. Site construction, about two and a half. And then kind of the soft cost, architecture fees and estimating contingency. And the cost to acquire the land could be in the three to three and a half million range, which gets us to the total of, of almost sixteen million. I did break it down on the side. This, the sixteen million is a fifty to seventy year solution on this building. It's, we're not proposing a metal, a pre-engineered metal building for this site. We're looking at using more durable materials that would stand the test of time, pre-cast, brick cavity wall for the, the office area. And EPDM, EPDM roofs, metal panels, just more, more durable materials in general than, than a metal building. And we, we've been seeing on buildings similar to this, prices in the one thirty to one forty a square foot range. Now that does not include all of the, the site buildings necessarily, the cold storage buildings, things like that, but generally, it's in that, that one thirty to one forty range. And then as far as next steps go, for, for us, and if there was more of a due diligence process that needed to happen prior to a land purchase, we would be looking to do some preliminary building engineering and some preliminary site engineering, I think would probably even be the bigger one. Just making sure that grading would be possible, making sure that all the utilities would be sized for a facility of this, of this size. And creating a stormwater management plan would be, would be advisable.
So I mean, the, the preferred site is, is the Range Trail West site, which is also known as the Purple Cow site. And it meets all the design criteria, the expandability, the utilities are, are there for connection. The other component is being centralized for all the residents within the city of Verona or close to it because we have a lot of in and out traffic with the e-waste and the rec center being right there for all the summer programs, working with Casey and his team. This is one of the most accessible sites that we could find that has the space and the need that we would, that this study has shown that we, we need to acquire. I have talked to the landowner of the Purple Cow site and there's interest on both parties here. So that's, that's another advantage also for, for them and us. So I guess we would open up the floor to any questions.
Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Steiner, please.
Theron, did you look down in the core part of town around Half Mile Road off of Nine-Mound there? There's, I know there's land for sale down in that area, more in the core of the town?
The size of the sites, Brad, are very limited. On what we have, we're looking at basically twenty acres is what we, what we need and there isn't anything of that size except for these three sites that are, that are within town. So the, the properties out there are all owned by either the school district or the Urbach property is the other, the other site there, and they're only at fourteen acres and probably a good quarter of that is undevelopable due to the grade changes and the dry tributary running through there. So it's, it's very limited on where we can go due to the, the size of the area that's needed and the footprint that we have, you know, that's required. We have a lot of equipment that's utilized on a day-to-day basis. Everyone sees it out and about. With that comes, comes space in a larger, larger facility. The one unique thing with the public works department here is that there's kind of five departments within one. You got public works, you got storm, sanitary, water, recycling and refuge, and then parks is in the building also, and then rec. So there's a large, there's twenty staff in there on a daily basis that are full-time, not including seasonals that are brought in in the summer. So it's, it's a very large building. It's very utilized. Space is a necessity for us.
And a follow-up to that, at your present site down there on, on Bruce Street, you don't plan on abandoning that, are you?
The, if the direction was to build a new facility to the size that we would need, we would look at selling that or reusing that for a different department.
Because I would, I would think that is a, a real good location. From the meetings I attended with my constituents, they love that area for their drop-offs. And, you know, you, you can't get in and out any easier or any part of town than right there and, and to abandon that, I'd like to see us utilize that area maybe in a different way. I understand what you're trying to do, but I, I'm also looking at it from, you know, we do have people that want to drive and get rid of their junk and their product and, and you can't beat that site.
I don't disagree with the location of that at all, but looking at the sites that were available, we're not that far away either. If we were to move off a range trail or some other location within the city. There were spots that we did look at that we do own land, you know, Northern Lights was one with the pit out there, but that is years and years and years before that would be available to build something like this on and also that isn't in the use plan for that either. And the location is not ideal for, for the site due to the accessibility, like Mr. Steiner noted, for all the residents within the city of Verona.
And another follow-up on that Purple Goose site, what, what path would you suggest that citizens would take to get to that site?
I would take County Highway M out to Range Trail to get there. That would be a very clean route.
Okay, I'm not following you off of M?
Yep, off of M.
Do you have to go down Locust at all and go across that bridge into that scenic ridge area and cut over?
I would continue on South Main Street, past Locust, past Whalen, past Prairie Heights, go over the bridge that goes over US Highway 151. And if you're going southbound, take a right onto Range Trail and that parcel is right there. So it's.
So, so the entrance to the property would be approximately where it is now off a range trail to get into the Purple Goose, except that the drive, the driveway would be moved farther to the south.
Correct. Yep.
Any follow-up, Mr. Steiner?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding the old building, my gut says to, to hang on to it just because it seems like property values are going up, up, up. And if we sold it in the near future and we had future space needs for the city, we'd end up buying something else for way more money and, and not saving money over the, the long term. So, so my gut says that we, we should hang on to that, that area.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Linder, please.
What about the V A C T building that we?
The V A C T. The V A C T building that we are going, excuse me, I got a cold. The V A C T building that we're acquiring that is off of Bruce Street basically is going to declutter the drive aisles that we have right now. So basically all the parks equipment, and I got it listed out here of what we have, what Parks has, that is gonna, those pieces of equipment are going to move over there. So all of the day-to-day maintenance and the parks bay are still going to remain at public works. That would be an overflow storage area for the parks department.
What's the long-term thoughts on that building though?
That is the long-term thought with that, utilizing that for the parks overflow storage with their two trailers they have and the.
So even if you got a new building, you have overflow in that?
That we would move everything.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yep, we would take, the, the goal of looking at the space needs study was to what we would need on a different site with taking everything up, taking everything that we have and moving it there. You know, let, I want to let Doug comment on some of the conversations you've had with other facilities where there's split buildings, meaning departments are segregated. It becomes very inefficient on day-to-day operations with, when you have multiple sites. We're not a city of that size and I, and Doug, please chime in here.
Yeah, no, there are two that come to mind right away. We're doing some, we're doing some work with the city of New Berlin. Now they're, they're a, geographically, they're a lot larger than the city of Verona. But they have, they have multiple facilities all across their city. And the problem that they run into is staff member A leaves a piece of equipment at one facility. They don't communicate that to someone else and then you have, you have staff members basically running all over town or in this case to two different sites to locate different pieces of equipment that have been left in, in an incorrect place or a different place than normal. I, I know the city of Green Bay, who again is very, much larger. They have two facilities and they've even noted that people that are, people that are stationed at, at one facility versus the other, they almost have two different mindsets, two different work ethics almost to a degree because they're not being. Because they're not being, people at, at one facility aren't being managed in the same fashion that they, the city maybe intends at their main facility. So that's another, that's another concern long-term, I would think, from an operation. Those are both operational kind of discussions.
One of the advantages that we utilize down at Public Works is the, the equipment is multi-use. We don't buy a piece of equipment and it's just used at, for one specific season. We utilize the same equipment year-round to get the most use and the best use and maximize the equipment that we have there. So we're getting the best bang for the city's investment on the snow, snow plows, the dump trucks, the wheel loaders, the large expensive pieces of equipment that we have. And obviously that includes all the service trucks, fleet trucks that we use, you know, for the day-to-day operations of moving around town, moving equipment, working on construction sites and assisting the residents of the city of Verona.
Mr. Linder, please.
So I remember we talked about buying the V A C T and I don't think you were here yet, to be honest, because I remember Mr. Reader talking about how if we bought the V A C T, T building, building in bias, I thought he said four to five years.
And I, I did talk to Mr. Reader about that and those were the timelines here. And what we would be looking at here is a ideal timeframe would be a 2021 move-in.
When would you have to start? When we start, when we start borrowing money, let me ask you that.
I would, correct. I would like to program in the land acquisition and the preliminary engineering and for next year to secure the site and then move step-by-step over a three-year period after that to, to borrow the money for the construction.
So. Go ahead, Mr. Linder.
So if you did a, if it was four to five years, which I'm, that would put us right at 2021?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So I'd look at eighteen, we're looking at the land, some of the engineering and then nineteen, twenty and twenty-one for the borrowing, break out the, the construction and the, the soft costs.
I do, I know you're kind of trying to get everybody on one roof. I do definitely see an advantage to that.
Mm-hmm.
Not, you, you talk about culture differences in different places and there can be issues with that and pitting one against the other unintentionally and stuff. So I think there could be some advantages just to keep everybody on the same roof like you do.
Right, and that's a huge advantage for us on a day-to-day operations. I couldn't tell you how many times on just, I, there's a water question that comes to me, a sewer, storm, or refuge. We are very communicative on face-to-face and it is very efficient. And we're able to actually get something done instead of having to drag out or being more efficient and wasting time.
Sharing resources and stuff.
Exactly. That's the other thing too, exactly. By having parks in there, parks is very dependent on a lot of the resources that we have, the equipment. They're using our trucks, we're using, excuse me, we're using some of their equipment, but more everyone's very dependent on the resources that the Public Works Department has.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Steiner, please.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. A question for Doug.
Yeah.
Uh, you made the comment about that example of some city that built their satellite places, two or three different places in the city. Did they make any comments about machinery being used on the road all the time and the, and the time that these people drive this expensive equipment, wear and tear, going thirty miles an hour or twenty-five miles an hour or fifteen miles an hour from place to place? What the cost that's affected by that?
Sure, we've had general discussions about that. I think, I think that's outside of the scope of what I, I typically do, but absolutely from a, from an efficiency standpoint. I look at things from a building efficiency standpoint, making sure that, you know, within a building, people are close to what they need to be close to so that they're not taking up additional time. But certainly from a, a day-to-day operations standpoint, if, if you have to spend ten minutes in the car three times a day, you know, looking for, that, that's, that's thirty minutes a day of inefficiency on your staff's time, really, if they're going back and forth from building to building. I, I know the existing site is not, not more than five or seven minutes away from this new site that is being proposed. But that is a significant amount of time that could be spent if you're running back and forth frequently, absolutely.
Thank you, and, and a follow-up if I may.
Go ahead.
A problem that I see, I, I'm around the city quite a, a lot and, and I, I see these mowers and, and equipment buzzing down the road, you know, and, and I don't know if they're made for a long haul to be driven like this. Would we have to probably invest in trailers and, and things like this to pull these machines around and unload them and do the work and then load them up again and take them back out to the new site?
Mr. Steiner, we actually have all those, that equipment already with, between Public Works and Parks to utilize, mobilize these, this equipment throughout the city. So if that, that is needed, we're already set up for that.
Well, I see a lot of them driving themselves, a little mower going along as fast as he can with the traffic going from someplace to another. I see too much of that and, and, you know, moving us further away from the core of the town, there's gonna be a lot more of that, the way I look at it. Thank you.
Any additional, Ms. Gaskill, please?
I have a question for you, Aaron. Are we gonna have the capability to expand what we accept for recycling? Because I do hear a lot of people would love to bring their extra that they can in their cart, which we don't do now. Is that something we'd be able to do, if we have more space?
Everything, we're, the way our contract is set up with waste management is anything that's picked up curbside is to be picked up curbside. So if they had, if they constantly have extra recycling, the, the goal there is where they would get another cart. So we wouldn't, that'd be a conversation in the direction that the council would have to give me on what we would want to look for in the next contract with our recycling pickup. So if we wanted, the goal, I don't want to put this. The goal would keep the protocol the way it is now with expanding the e-waste, the metal, the oil bin, the yard waste and anything that's picked up curbside, still be picked up curbside.
Any additional? Ms. Doyle, please.
Has, has it been looked at yet? If we move forward with a new site, what the current site, either what kind of operational uses the city could have for that or what kind of revenues could be garnered from its sale? Or is that something that would be a part of the next phase of, of planning?
I do know that the rec department has been looking at possible options for renovating the Public Works facility and turning that into a rec facility. That is a task that Mr. Dudley and Mr. Walker are leading. I have not been involved with that and there's, there's no funds set aside or budgeted right now to do any further space needs or other analyses for the current building. So the answer is yes and no, in a way, so.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you, um, I know we're not quite there yet, but, um, when we talk about design, I hope, I just want to emphasize how important it is that I think that building be energy efficient, that it use renewables, that we should look at things like potentially the Tesla solar shingles or solar panels with the battery. And just, because it's a really big opportunity, one, to, to help, you know, protect our environment and not, not use resources we don't need to. And then of course, save money if the building's gonna last for thirty, forty, fifty years. All that stuff's gonna pay for itself. So I think, I think that really needs to be a big component of this.
Other questions or comments? I'll just give my two cents worth on it. Number one is when we built the building, we didn't know that we're gonna grow that, like we did. So we were talking about seven thousand in population at that time and now we're just under thirteen thousand in population. So there definitely is a need that we need either a bigger facility or expansion at the current facility. Of the sites mentioned, I prefer the site to the west of Range Trail. Having said that though, being that it's adjacent to a residential subdivision, we would want to make sure that that building looked real nice as well, to appease the people nearby. I think you mentioned that we're looking at approximately twenty acres. I believe that size is about twenty-two acres.
Correct.
And, you know, I think it just makes a lot of sense that, not that we did anything wrong, our, our building that we currently have has, has met its purposes for the city, it's just too small for what we need now.
Correct.
So I want to make sure that when we build again, that we're not building too small. So my, my suggestion would be is that, by consensus, that we, that we agree that the staff and the committee continue to work forward. And at some point, we need to start putting some numbers into, into the budget and so, and plan for our long-term borrowing. And I think that the, you know, Mr. Diaz brought it up and, and Ms. Doyle brought up about the potential reuse of that building. And I, I would say everything is on the table from as to whether or not we keep it. We can only sell it once. I used to always say that about the old library and we still want it, we can only sell it once. So it'd have to be the right decision to make. Certainly, it would reduce our borrowing costs if we were able to sell the building and put some of that money towards the new building. But that's a decision that's more down the road and I think we've got good people sitting around the, the desk here and we can come up with good ideas of how we move forward with that. So I would strongly encourage that you continue to work, move forward with, with a plan. And I, I think that the expansion on the current site is not the best decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just want to add, you know, I was thinking about the, the drop-off that Alder Steiner brought up. And, and I do remember during our discussions, possibly even driving a loop, because right now, one of the struggles I have when dropping something off is you have to leave the same way you came in, which adds congestion on a busy day like a Saturday morning. So, yeah, I do feel really confident that the new site will have much better flow for people to come and go from the, the location. You know, in addition to some of the sustainability comments that were brought up, which I agree with generally, you know, for me, I always like to think about, okay, it's a fifty to seven-year building that you're proposing, but I really would like to see in with whatever future plans I may come up with, whatever site we pick, that we account for some sort of growth of the building. You know, we grew a lot faster than we planned. Clearly, we weren't the best at predicting our future, whoever really is. But I think whatever we do with this building, we need a plan for a reasonable amount of growth on that site. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the site selection criterias that wasn't really overly noted, but was definitely talked about in the meetings that we had was the, the expandability of the site and the building that we would lay out. And that, meaning the building is, the geometrics of it and the materials that would, would be utilized to construct it. So we could basically, if it came to a point in forty years down the road that the facility needed to be expanded, we could take off one end of it, say it's the Purple Cow site, take the west wall off and basically expand it westerly, increase in the size of the garage and not having to relocate. So you have the, the space on the site, the building is built to expand it and the geometrics are there throughout the building and the site, so there's no adverse impacts on the other functions on site like the e-waste or the salt storage, outside storage, et cetera. And to follow up with your question, Luke, we did have discussions about skylights, big fans within the shop for recirculating air. So those indirect conversations have occurred. So and just how they get implemented into the plan is part of the design effort. So we will definitely look at the green energy alternatives for maximizing the, the building's use. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Just one other comment that I wanted to make, and this gets, gets back to the location. I really think this is almost an ideal location. I really like the access that we have to go through the middle of the city. I know Mr. Steiner mentioned about being a little farther away from, from the downtown area. But if you look at the area where the city has really grown a lot recently, it has shifted somewhat that way too. So I, I think it's really, it's a, it's a pretty good site.
Thank you.
Mr. Linder, please.
How big is that area across the street from the Zurbach in there, that field? Is that big enough?
That's the, that's the one that we looked at, the first site. That was the Matt's property. Nope, the, that one.
Oh, gotcha.
Yep. So there's two drainage ways. There's the Badger Mill and then there's also the large greenway that runs along Prairie Heights. That actually dumps in.
So it's only seven acres?
And it comes right across, kind of at a diagonal forty-five from southeast to northwest across the site. And then there's also a fill site at the southeast corner that nobody really knows where the boundary is of that. So that's kind of the environmental concerns on top of the wetlands, the proximity to the channel, the floodplain issues, the, the general topography of the site and the stability of the soils down there too would be a, be a major concern.
Thanks.
Any additional questions or comments? If not, based on the discussion we had this evening, we anticipate we will hear more from you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Touche?
Uh, next up, we have the energy analysis. Doug, are you handling that as well?
Yes.
He said he could close one of them and it's. He's got it open.
Oh, is it open?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, as another part of what we did for the, the department, it was taking a look at the existing building in a little bit more detail as far as an energy audit goes on the building. Yep, go ahead.
So for the energy audit, to do this on a citywide basis, you actually gotta look at each building individually because they each have their own site-specific constraints from the type of construction, the space needs, the use, the type of mechanical equipment that is in there. So to apply certain metrics that, that could be utilized here at the city center, to be utilized at Public Works or the new library, none of those kind of intertwine. So what we did here was, we had all the information for the Public Works facility. We knew that was one of the largest, if not the largest, energy consumer out of the public buildings just because of the size of it. So we utilized that to figure out what the impacts and what the utility costs are and where the inefficiencies were in the building to utilize that information and how that could be applied towards other buildings in a, in a different study if the direction from the council was given to do that. So if, hopefully that made sense.
Did to me.
Okay, thank you.
So as part of this, as part of this project, we, we looked initially at the, the building systems. We then, we then modeled the existing building, gave all the walls and doors and windows different thermal characteristics. And then we ran an energy simulation. From there, we, we summarized energy-efficient measures, things that could happen in the building, things that could be done to the building physically to, to increase the building's energy efficiency. And then we tried to apply some costs to those, to those different, different energy efficiency measures. So the building itself, the garage has infrared heaters and two air handler units, moving air in the garage. The office is served by an air conditioner, a boiler, and then V A V boxes within the office space. The system, because the building was built around two thousand, is approaching twenty years old. Generally, H V A C equipment is good between twenty and thirty years. So I, I believe some, some has already been replaced, some different pieces have been replaced. But a major replacement in the next ten years could be a possibility. As far as the lighting goes, the lighting in the, in the garage area has been replaced recently with new LEDs and fluorescent lights in the offices could, could be replaced with LEDs in the future. So like I said, we, we began, we modeled the, the property, we gave thermal characteristics to the walls. We gave thermal characteristics to the walls, doors, windows, skylights. We gathered the data from Theron and his staff on the electric and gas bills over the course of the last three years. Twenty sixteen wasn't a complete year yet, so we had twenty fourteen and fifteen, twenty fifteen was, or twenty sixteen was actually similar numbers as well. Then, once we had, once we had the building modeled, we ran an energy simulation, which projects, it projects the building's efficiency over, it, it basically uses local weather, weather stations, and it projects how the building would, how the building would work from an energy efficiency standpoint over, over a number of years. As you can see, the electric usage, generally, about fifty percent of the electric is used for HVAC equipment, forty percent for lighting, and then ten percent for, ten percent for miscellaneous equipment, computers and, and such. The energy use for gas is primarily, is primarily HVAC equipment and very minimal amount for domestic hot water. And then, the annual, the annual cost, the annual energy use, seventy percent of the building, their energy use is from gas, not electric. The energy simulation kicked out, a couple of different graphs. This is the monthly heating load, obviously. In the, in the summer months, it's very minimal. In the winter months, you can see the different contributing factors to, to the heating load. You're losing a lot of your energy through your walls that some are not insulated, your roof, and different infiltration from doors opening. In the summer, it's just kind of the opposite. These are different, generally, these are things that are contributing to the heat coming into the building. Sun coming through the windows, infiltration of doors opening, even lighting fixtures add to the heat of the building because they're fluorescents. The monthly fuel consumption, as you can see, in the summer months, the gas is very minimal. The, the bills reflect that, too. There's really minimal bills on, on gas in the summertime. Electric stays pretty similar throughout the year, peaking in the summer months and in the, the coldest months to run the HVAC equipment. So, this chart basically shows how the building is performing. The, the higher number, the worse the building is performing. This is, this building is just outside, just above what Ashray ninety-point-one says is inefficient building. So, it's just outside. Now, for a, a building of its age, I, I think this is, it's acting pretty normally. There are a few things that can be done to get that number back down. But, we've seen buildings that are kind of off the charts to the top here. So, this generally is not performing all that poorly, but there are definitely some things that we would design a little bit differently if we were doing, if and when the time comes we're designing a new facility. We would certainly be shooting for, in, in the range of thirteen-point-two and lower. So, some different, some different options on things that could be done if the city wishes to hold on to that building. There are some acrylic skylights that I understand have some minor leaking issues as well, but they're, they're single pane. So, what happens is the heat, the heat from the garage goes up, and it escapes throughout the sink, through the single pane, the single pane skylights. Right now, there's exterior block wall up until about eight feet around the entire perimeter of the building. It's uninsulated, so that would be something, I, I would say we probably wouldn't go this route unless there was a major remodel done to the building. But, we could, we could provide an insulated metal panel and reskin that building, which would provide a little bit more energy efficiency. Just a general note would be to make sure that all, all doors and windows are sealed properly. The building's been in use now for twenty years. Weather stripping and caulk and sealants have, have worn throughout that time. You may be losing some excess heat that way. One other thing, there are no de-stratification fans currently in the garage bays. Generally, that's something that we put in all of our new shops. That pushes the hot air that rises up to the ceiling in a large volume space like that. It pushes it back down to, it, it basically recirculates the warm air so that you're not, your systems aren't kicking on as frequently. And then, lastly, we could replace fluorescent lighting in the office area with new LED lighting costs to run that, and heat on those would be significantly less. So, then we looked at the summary, we, we tried to summarize some costs associated with these things that I just mentioned. To replace the skylights, it could be in the fifteen to twenty thousand dollar range. Adding insulation to the CMU garage walls and new insulated metal panels could be a hundred and twenty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars total. Properly sealing exterior doors could be, you know, very simple to a slightly more complicated, twenty-five hundred to twenty thousand. Adding de-stratification fans, which I think would be my, if I, if you asked me one thing that I would probably do, I think that would be a, a, a good spot to start. It could be sixty to eighty thousand, probably four fans, I think, would take care of that space. It does a few things to improve not only the, the comfort to the occupants, but also it lowers, it'll significantly lower your costs to operate the facility. And it'll, it'll also get the water off the floor is another nice thing that it does. So, it'll, it'll, the, the garage floor's longevity will, it'll hold up a lot longer. And then, replacing the lighting could be twenty-five to thirty grand. An additional thing, solar photovoltaic system could be installed to try and offset all of the costs of the electric. That could range from a hundred and fifty to a hun- or two hundred thousand. Paybacks on the de-stratification fan and the solar PV systems will range from nine to twelve years. So, that kind of gives you another idea of, you know, if you're going to be in that building more long-term, I think both of those could be good options for the city to consider. Non-measurable improve...
Go ahead.
So, the, the photovoltaic, photovoltaic panels, you had, I don't know if you go back one slide there...
Yep, yep, sure.
Hundred, fifty to two hundred thousand is, would that be similar if we did it on a new building? That we talked about earlier?
Probably not, it probably wouldn't be the same because of the size of the building and equipment that's being...
It'd be more energy efficient, though.
What's that?
It'd be more energy efficient, though.
If we, if we did this, the photovoltaic?
No, if you got your, your range, you're at seventeen, if you're down thirteen or below.
Oh, certainly. And those are, those are, those are items that, when the design starts, those are items that our engineering consultants will, will really dive deep into and make sure that, make sure that they're sizing those correctly. We, we just recently did, actually about two years ago, we did a solar PV system for a garage facility in Fond du Lac. And I, I should check in with them and see how that's doing after two years. But, the goal there was to create, create enough energy that it offsets their, their electric costs entirely. And I, as far as I know, they've, they've been successful with that to date. But, I would like to revisit it and see what the payback period is.
Thank you.
And then, some non-measurable improvements, some of the lesser things that could be done, some of the things that I mentioned earlier. You probably wouldn't notice as big, as big a change. The payback period would be longer on some of these items. Motion-activated lights, changing to LED fixtures, improving the glazing and air infiltration, and really just making the building envelope more efficient. Those things will be, the, the payback period on those would be significantly more than the other two that I mentioned.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Ms. Gaskell.
On the last slide, upgrading light fixtures, LEDs in the garage one part of the done. Category for the office with lights.
It would pretty much be all, all the lighting fixtures like you see in a drop ceiling. I think we counted, I'm trying to remember, I want to say it was sixty different lights. That's in the office space, correct? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we, we'll be replacing about sixty lights in the, in the office area.
Additional questions or comments? Well, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Currently, the office layout is, it has the four-foot fluorescent tube fixtures here. All lights are on a motion-activated sensor in all the walkways, the offices, the buildings. So, it would be literally just changing out the whole fixture to get the ballast out, put an LED setup in, and changing out the office lights. That's the main improvement that could be done in the office setting.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Linder?
Just follow up then. So, what's your plan moving forward regarding this study?
The, the goal of the study here was to provide information on where the inefficiencies could be in certain buildings, noting from the study here, most buildings where the energy is being utilized, or the most is in the HVAC systems. So, if there's indirect measures that we know can be changed, we could move forward in certain buildings by changing out lights to LEDs, looking at different avenues of insulation measures on the type of, how the building was constructed, if it's insulated or not. Most of the buildings probably are, but that's something we can look into going forward here. I think it's a two-part question on what the current Public Works facility is going to be and what improvements the council would like us to make there depending on what the future of that facility would be. You know, if it's sold, repurposed into some other use, then I think if it's repurposed, that's the time when you could do a major improvement. But, there is capacity to do minor improvements, say the fans or lighting fixtures. And if that's the direction that the council would like to move forward on, I can certainly add those to the capital improvement program.
Doug, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I, I was just going to add that the, depending on what the city wants to do with the, with the facility moving forward, I would recommend doing, doing the de-stratification fans simply because it, it adds some value moving forward as well, potential buyer for the property, if that's what the, the goal would be. There would be some value there to a potential buyer. Some of the other, some of the other items, potential buyer may not see. But, that would be, that would be one that would add a lot of value to the city right away. And a potential buyer for that property could see value in the future.
You just made the point that I was going to make. So, but I think that, I think it'd be very difficult for us as the full council to say how we're going to move forward this evening. I would suggest that we continue to let the Public Works and, and Public Works staff work on that. But, I saw two hands. Mr. Touche, please?
That's exactly what I was going to say. You know, if the two of you could work together, kind of come up with a low-hanging fruit list, but, you know, for, and, and just kind of say, come up with some recommendations. We can talk about it at a committee, and then I think, share with the council what we're doing.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I guess, yeah, my, my comments are in line with that. I just hope someone checks the doors to make sure they're properly weatherized. And I also think the fans are, are a good idea.
Mr. Jacobson?
I do know our, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do know the new facilities manager is being very proactive on checking the outside maintenance and interior maintenance of all the buildings. And that's something that has been an advantage of having that new position this year by getting a maintenance schedule created and knowing what needs to be done in the future to not only the Public Works, but all the city-owned buildings. So...
And I was going to suggest that this is a good start, but I think we need to continue to have this conversation during the budget process this year, and I would like to see some of the other buildings taken a look at as well. Mr. Linder, please.
Yeah, if you do bring something to the budget, if you get, you know, one or two quotes instead of just these round estimates, that'd be great, because I think in our building, we put four sixteen-foot diameter fans. I don't think it was anywhere near sixty thousand, but...
Okay.
Just, you know...
Were they the big...
Big Fan Company?
Yeah, the Big Fan Company? Okay.
Those are like the top-end ones, aren't they?
Yeah.
No, I don't think ours are.
Okay.
Just having some hard data would be good.
Any other comments? If not, again, we will look forward to hearing more from the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Counsel.
And Doug, nice seeing you again.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, we are on to old business, item number ten. Discussion and possible action regarding selection of a city council representative to the planning commission. Do we have any nominations this evening?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Touche?
I would like to nominate Mr. Jack Linder.
Mr. Linder has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Ms. Doyle?
I would like to nominate Alder Diaz.
Alder Diaz has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Not seeing any. Roll call vote, please.
Alder Doyle?
Diaz.
Alder Gaskell?
Diaz.
Alder Linder?
Linder.
Alder McGilvray?
Linder.
Alder Steiner?
Linder.
Alder Touche?
Linder.
Alder Diaz?
Diaz.
And the motion fails four to three. And for those watching that might not be aware, it does take six, a minimum of six votes. So, the four, that's why the four-three vote fails. We are on new business. We have approval of operator licenses this evening. Ms. Clark, please?
I have none.
We have none this evening, so we are on to announcements. Mr. Steiner, please?
Yes, our city programs have started at Veterans and Harriet, and there are a lot of young people riding their bikes around town right now, getting to these programs. And with all the bypasses and cars that don't know where they're going, please, children, keep your eyes out for these cars, because they're mad. They, they're not driving right, right now, because they're trying to get through town quickly. And we have detoured them in different ways, and they're not following the detours yet. And parents, please, we, we don't need to have something negative happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any additional announcements this evening? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be, excuse me, I want to ask the question. July tenth would be our next council meeting. Is anyone aware that they will not be able to make the July tenth meeting? All right. With that, a motion to adjourn would be in order? We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Linder. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.